Two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the March 4th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Bill Twist, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
If you bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we have freedom to worship you in this great country. We ask that you would watch over those that are protecting us overseas, also our first responders here locally. We just ask that you be with us this evening to guide us and direct us for what's best for the city of Troy, and we ask that in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Seibert?
Present.
Mr. Heath?
Not better, Mrs. Knight?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Twist?
Present.
Mr. Swazer?
Present.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Also here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
All members are present.
I'm in here also. It's all right.
I am sorry.
I see it, Sue. All right, Sue.
I think I got so confused.
All members of the council are here. That guy, boss.
Well, maybe you were right.
Tonight on, we have a presentation. Mayor Bemish?
Sure.
You will be making that.
Well, look who's recycling. It's back for a quarterly program. This is a program with Rumkey and the city of Troy, and we've been doing this now for a while. Today, we are, we have a new recipient, Dean Bechtel. Come on up. Come on down. And we all know what recycling does for our environment, and I have with me our street foreman, Jerry Molins. And Jerry, if you do the honors, we have something from Rumkey, the city of Troy, and appreciation for your efforts in recycling.
Thank you.
And helping the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the February 19th, 2019, meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, February 19, 2019. A public hearing was held on ordinance number O three, 2019. Committee reports, Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared amending fee schedule to adjust cemetery fees. Committee recommended that these recommendations of the Loan Review Committee be supported approving a loan to Slimline Surgical Devices, DBA Canyon Run Engineering Technologies. Personnel Committee gave an oral report and then approved the reappointments of Mark Douglas and Larry Smith to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council. Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing positions to be appointed to the Troy Reinvestment Fund, and then that subject was discussed. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing two Treasure Island non-ticketed use agreements for concerts during 2019. Committee recommended legislation be prepared approving the name of the event concessionary at Miami Shores to be the Shoreline. Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing a new agreement with the city of Dayton for providing lime and lime services to the city of Troy. Committee recommends legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the replacement of the programmable logic controller system at the wastewater treatment plant. Resolution R four, 2019, loan application Slimline Surgical Devices, DBA Canyon Run Engineering was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R five, 2019, contract for the replacement of the PLC system at the wastewater plant was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R six, 2019, naming concession area, the Shoreline at Miami Shores, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R seven, 2019, adjusting fees, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R eight, 2019, authorizing appointees to the Board of Directors of the Troy Reinvestment Fund was given first reading and failed adoption. Ordinance number O three, 2019, a rezoning for parcel of In Lot 10622 was given public hearing in second reading. Ordinance number O four, 2019, authorizing agreement with the city of Dayton regarding lime was given first reading. Ordinance number O five, 2019, having two non-ticketed use agreements of Treasure Island Park was given first reading and was adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:35 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes as read. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll move on to committee reports. The committee of the whole council met, and I have that report. I chaired the committee, the whole meeting on February 28th, 2019, to provide recommendation to the city auditor regarding whether Troy should join open checkbook as offered by the Office of the Ohio Treasurer. The meeting included a presentation by Lauren Bowen of the Office of the Ohio Treasurer, followed by comments and discussion with council and elected officials. The following motion by Mr. Kendall to recommend to the city auditor that the city of Troy join the open checkbook program offered by the state treasurer. There was a motion, and it followed a roll called vote. Mr. Twilliger was absent from that meeting. The yes votes were Heath, Kendall, Lutz, Oda, Phillips, Swazer, and Twist, and the no vote was Mr. Seibert. It was noted that the recommendation of council would not require legislation, but it reported the committee of the whole submitted and then voted on at the council meeting. Are there any questions from council at this point?
Yes, Madam President.
Yeah, Mr. Swazer.
Since that meeting, I've had time to reflect on this. And I keep going back to the question I asked. Can the state look at this as all the cities, municipalities, villages, townships as a whole and see how much our revenue is and how much, how much we're spending and to see how much we actually have? And the first time I asked a question, I kind of got an obfuscated answer, so I asked a second time, and the second time I asked, she said, yes, it could. And here's what bothers me. When I first came on council 10 years ago, we were over a million dollars in the hole. And we did a lot of things to try to streamline the government. We put in the automatic meter readers. I think we ran without a couple of fire people. I think we ran without a couple of police people. We didn't pay for a few years, and we got our budget in line. But right after we did all that, the state comes along and the state sees how much they're getting in the local government fund, which was over a million dollars they were giving to Troy. And they pulled that back. And then, right after that, they pulled the inheritance fund out from under us. So we've lost over a million three every year into our budget as revenue. And so I go back to the question, could they look at all that together? And, and, and my fear is that, right now, yes, it's free. Anything free is worth what you pay for it. But my fear is that at some point, you're going to get enough municipalities on board, and the state's just going to mandate that everybody go with this. And then they're going to start mandating how we do our accounting. How we account for paper clips in Troy has to be the same as they account for paper clips in Uber Heights and Tip City or wherever. And, and, and then my ultimate fear with this whole thing is that at some point, you're going to get another administration in that wants to expand another program. And how are they going to pay for that new program if they can just put all the cities' credit cards all together into one and start charging the cities extra money? And, and, and at this point, I think I would like to, if I can, pull my, my approval of this, and even if it has to be a motion to say, I don't want to go on open checkbook, I'll throw a motion on the table to do that.
I'll second that.
Well, I don't know that it has to be a motion. This is your feeling, and this is your vote. And it's my understanding on this vote, you can vote whichever way you want to.
Okay.
You don't have to vote the way you did the other night.
Okay.
I would just mention a couple of things, and I don't know if it'll address any of your questions or not, but number one, our budgets are totally public information anyway.
Yes, they are.
So if the state wants to go to any city and find out exactly what their bottom line is, they can do that. The rest of what you commented on, I would say, you know, we can't say yes or no what's going to happen in the future.
And I'm not just.
And I feel like it's, you know, it's all speculation.
You're right. And, and my fear is.
And so I'm not trying to change your mind, I'm just trying to address that I think, you know, what, what you're seeing may or may not happen, but it's all speculation. A lot of things could happen.
Right.
None of us might be here tomorrow. I mean, you know, we could have a tornado through here tonight. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's all speculation. But that being said, I think you're free to vote whichever way you want to tonight.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary to make a motion to vote one way or the other at this point.
Okay. I'll retract my second.
Okay.
But I, I will, if I may?
You may, yes.
I'll echo what Mr. Swazer is, is indicating, because we saw what happened with our income tax collection also. It's completely taken out of our hands and with our former governor. Throw him under the bus. That's exactly where he belongs. But it's just, I, I agree after.
But they bet all of that was done without, without open checkbook.
No, I, I get it, but that is a slippery slope when they start taking away home rule items and our control over our finances and how we, how we do our business.
Right.
Madam President, I have a question. I, where do we vote on it tonight? Because I'm looking at the agenda, and I don't see it, or you or Patrick.
We vote on it as a committee report, so after, I'll call for, after committee comments are made, if anybody has any further questions.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to move that we go ahead with our vote to pass it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve this committee report of the whole. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
May, may I ask a question of Mr. Kerber? Just, this was going to be a, a vote on accepting the committee report, but if the vote may be different from what the committee, the committee report reflects, so should it be a motion on it?
Well, in what, in my understanding of this motion and what's in front of council now is, is whether or not you want to communicate to the auditor what you believe the direction of the city should be. And that's what you're voting on at this point in time. And it's my understanding, the committee report was, I think it was a seven to one vote, that the committee, at least the written report that was submitted, is indicating that, as it stands, the committee report's indicating that it, it's the committee of the whole's recommendation that, that, that their wishes be forwarded on to the auditor. Is that, did I answer your question, Mrs. Knight?
So a yes vote now indicates that they want to move forward with this.
Yes.
And a no vote would indicate that they do not want to move forward with this.
That's correct.
Is that it? Clear?
That is, that's my.
Okay. Does that answer?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. So, please call the roll.
Mr. Seibert?
No. Consistently, no.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Swazer?
No.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
No.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
So it is three votes, yes, so the, the rest are no. So the motion does fail, and the direction to the auditor would be not to sign on open checkbook.
Okay, the next committee report this evening is from the Community and Economic Development Committee, and chairman, Mr. Bill Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on February 25th to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that parcel D zero eight dash one zero four three four six, In Lot 10622, be rezoned from M dash two Light Industrial District to an industrial plan development. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission regarding the proposed rezoning and recommends the council adopt ordinance number O dash three dash 2019, and that's respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions from council? Do you have anything further, Mr. Twist?
No.
Thank you. The next couple of reports are from the Finance Committee, and chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on February 25th, 2019, to consider authorizing bidding for a new contract for the curbside replacement program. The current contract expires in May. The recommended authorization is $400,000 each year of the multi-year contract. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for a curbside recycling program at a cost not to exceed $400,000 each year of the contract. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Seibert, and myself as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from council? You may continue, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you. This committee met on February 25th to review the recommendations of the Tax and Sentive Review Council, the TIRC, regarding the compliance status of Troy Town Park TIF and the four enterprise zone agreements that were in place as of December 31st, 2017. Such review and report is required on an annual basis. The TIRC has recommended that the TIF agreement be continued and that the remaining five enterprise zone agreements be continued as all agreements are in full compliance. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared accepting the recommendation of the TIRC, that the four current enterprise zone agreements be continued as they are in full compliance, that the Troy Town Park TIF be continued, and that the city must file an annual report with the Ohio Development Services Agency by the end of March regarding the continuance of the agreements and the TIF we support emergency legislation. And this too is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Seibert, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council? Do you have anything further?
No, thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Law and Ordnance Chairman, Mr. John Swazer, has our next report.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on February 19th to review amending local ordinances to be in compliance with new state laws regarding firearms. The Director of Law recommended that Troy's ordinance should be amended to eliminate the possibility that the city has laws that differ from state laws while providing that the city of Troy will still be able to enforce state laws that pertain to firearm regulations. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared amending local ordinances to be in compliance with new state laws regarding firearms. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seibert, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council? Do you have anything further?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. The last report this evening is from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. On February 25th, the committee met, and this is a status report from this February 25th meeting.
Wait a minute, Bobby.
Second.
I think you have the wrong report.
March 4th.
You want the last one?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Then I'm going to read the March 4th this evening's.
Thank you.
There's another bit here. The committee met on March 4th, 2019, to consider a new proposal related to time limit related parking in the downtown area after our February 25th meeting as we were looking for more information. It is a recommendation of this committee that the administration proceed to implement the parking time limits as shown on the attached map and that we had on the screen, and this will not require legislative action. The current moratorium on the issuance of tickets related to time limit parking expires March 31st. We understand that all signage announcing any new parking limits will be placed prior to March 31st. A later legislative action would be needed to provide that enforcement does not extend to Saturdays. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
You're welcome.
We now open the meeting to citizen comments.
Can we vote now?
Oh. There is no vote on that one?
Yes, I think.
I think.
The committee report.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I will make a motion to accept this recommendation as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to approve the recommendation on the downtown parking. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Committee report is accepted.
We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber is our timekeeper. Seeing none, then we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R nine, 2019.
Resolution number R nine, 2019, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the curbside recycling program. This would be for a multi-year contract, cost not to exceed $400,000 per year, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Motion to suspend the rules on that. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R ten, 2019.
Resolution number R ten, 2019, resolution accepting the recommendations of the Tax and Sentive Review Council and declaring an emergency. This accepts a report regarding the enterprise zones, that they be continued as all are in compliance and in fact exceed employment requirements. This is the first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes. Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R eleven, 2019.
Resolution number R eleven, 2019, resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax and Sentive Review Council for the Troy Town Park TIF and declaring an emergency. The Review Council recommended that the TIF agreement be continued. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspend. Second. Okay.
Is that you?
So I first.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall, seconded by Mr. Twilliger, to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O three, 2019.
Ordinance number O three, 2019, an ordinance changing the zoning of In Lot 10622, parcel number D zero eight, one zero four three four six, in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M two Light Industrial District to an industrial plan development, PD. This is located at 44 Peters Avenue, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This would be the third reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-4, 2019.
Ordinance number O-4, 2019. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement regarding the purchase of lime from the city of Dayton, Ohio. This would be a multi-year agreement extending the current agreement. This is the second reading, and we did receive word from the city of Dayton that they had had ample opportunity now to review the agreement document and were perfectly fine with how all the wording was.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt ordinance, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read the final ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-6, 2019.
Ordinance number O-6, 2019, an ordinance repealing sections 549.01, 549.02, 549.03, 549.04, 549.05, 549.06, 549.07, 549.10, 549.11, and renumbering sections 549.08 and 549.09 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio. This deals with firearms and will assure that the city is not in conflict with state law, first reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
This completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
Just a reminder about the filing of financial disclosure statements, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Blumich, do you have any comments this evening?
Just to once again thank Mrs. Bechtel for continuing to recycle and set a good example for all of us to protect our environment. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Titterington, comments this evening?
Nothing this evening, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggy.
Thank you, Madam President, I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. On behalf of City Council, I would like to congratulate Officer Todd Sloan on his retirement from the Troy Police Department after 24 years of service. And also congratulations go out to Mark Bartel, who's retiring from the Water Distribution Department with 14 years of service. Are there any comments from council members this evening? Mr. Kendall?
Yes, if I may.